Okay, online. And the next item on our, on our agenda here is the Mobley Unit Activity Report. We received that from Emily and I would like to thank Angelina and all of our staff for the, for the work of getting this project off the ground.
Yes.
Yeah, it's been a long wait. Did anybody have any questions or input on that? Okay.
I just have a comment about it. I noticed that often the, it's posted that it's going out the morning of or within a, you know, within, or even when it's heading out instead of it's going to be here at this certain time.
So we need to have both a schedule and an early posting.
Mm-hmm. What much earlier posting?
I think that's in the mix. That's in, in the works, but I don't, I can't tell you that for sure. But Michelle Hart Graves told me that when they are going to a particular area, they contact their clients in that area to tell them they're going to be there days ahead of time.
Okay.
And when they didn't go out that time, they contacted all their clients in that area and said, hey, we can't be there. Can we reschedule you for here at the Health Department?
And I don't think that was, went down as representative.
Correct. Yeah.
So.
So, you know, it's, it's a work in progress. I think it's, it's much better than, than what we had and I look forward to better things.
Yeah.
All right. Let's see here. Standing orders. In my understanding, I believe this is completed. Is that correct, Callie? Standing order is completed. We have a new affidavit that can be done by non-parents to permit an authorized person to consent for immunizations for minors. So I'm going to remove that from future discussion unless something new comes up. And next, volunteers in medicine. They contacted us and asked if there was a program that would assist them with getting discounted or free immunizations for 18 to 64-year-olds who do not qualify for Medicare, Medicaid and, or some other program. At this point in time, we haven't found a funding site for that, but Emily is investigating it.
Who is that?
Volunteers in medicine.
Oh, that's.
It is a group headed up by Dr. John Lorette. And the point of contact is a woman named Carol Daniels.
She contacted me directly, Carol.
Okay. So that's, you know, do we want to? I, I, I'm not sure what the, how that would look or how that could come and go down. But I do know that some of the immunizations that we used to offer to the seniors over at the senior center were cut off in the past because we didn't have the funding site for it. It caused some hard feelings.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Her and I heard about it.
Yeah.
And, you know, if we start a program, we need to make sure it's self-sustaining. Period. You know, it can't be something that will do for the next six months and then all of a sudden let it dry up. Because amongst seniors, it may take six months for us to hear the news.
Yeah.
Or to remember it. Yeah. I know, I resemble that comment too.
Every time I look at that screen, I'm like, who's that old man over there?
Yeah. From behind, you look like Joe Biden.
Oh, thanks.
Yeah, okay. So.
You know, that friendship we used to share is over.
Emily, Emily is working on that. And, and Callie, if you'd put it in the minutes, that we kind of look for an update on, on that, or a proposal, something that you can bring to the board.
It would be nice if we could do something like that. So maybe that looks likely completely inappropriate.
You know, wherever the funds, I have had such a problem in the past with us accepting funds from outside sources. However, we control how those are spent. And if it's a program that, that the board does not support or that we don't think that the community will support, we don't have to. We can participate in the program, but not bill them. We can not participate in that segment. And when it comes to things like Shingrich.
Shing.
Shingricks.
There you go, Shingrich.
Shingricks.
You can have it.
Don't worry, I don't.
The shingles shot.
Oh, true.
You know, for seniors, I don't see why that ever dried up. I would like to know why. And same thing with the 18 to 64-year-olds. I'd like to know, surely, you know, if DHSS is hell-bent on, on getting people immunized, if they want an immunization, even if I don't want it, that doesn't mean that we, we can't offer it. We can't come up with funds or, maybe it'll take moving the funds from some one place to another.
Right.
So. All righty.
So are we going to make a decision on that or we just, what do we?
I want to know what Emily comes up with because she's going to have to give us a, I have identified these potential funding sites. Would you want me to apply for them?
Okay.
And we were talking about the DHSS grants manager helping us to, to find. It may not even be money coming from the state. It may be money coming from a private organization. You know, there's, there's no reason why that's taboo.
Yeah.
So. Next thing on the agenda was the OCAC participation. I don't know if you all know, but Karen used to be the secretary of the OCAC, let me see, Ozark's area community, community action committee or something like that. The, she used to be the secretary for it. They contacted Emily and said, hey, are you going to fill that slot now? And at this point, my guidance to Emily is if you, if you want to and you have the time, it's, it's a worthy pursuit. But I, I cautioned her in, in my mind, don't get overcommitted. We'll, we'll see how that. I'm not sure how OCAC and, and the Health Department interact. And that Emily hopefully can, can fill us in on. Do you know, Callie, how OCAC and the Health Department work? Okay. Well, then we will leave that for later. Okay, that wraps up our old business unless somebody else has something else that, that we need to address. All righty. I say that too much. All right. New business. Well, environmental is first step. We're down to one environmental health specialist, no secretary. And Emily is advertising already for, for one. She didn't know, obviously she couldn't have known about Megan.
Yeah.
And I believe we had an email chain to approve hiring for, yeah, for both secretary and for another environmental health specialist. So those are out there.
Yeah.
I'm assuming she is utilizing the sources like Indeed and even Alis Akers-Narni to assist with that. But we, you know, we, we can't operate with one.
No. No, we're going to have to do something real quick.
And what has happened in the past is that the administrator has contacted surrounding areas and asked them for assistance during a period of drought, staff drought.
How bit are you on retirement?
Can you multitask?
Yeah. I don't know if she could legally.
I don't think she can legally.
I don't think she could be.
It's a hard fact. We're drawn to retirement from here. Plus on board.
Yeah, I don't.
I wouldn't even ask her.
Yeah.
Let's have another job.
Just bring.
Plus.
Plus.
Yeah, we, we have three universities in this town that train people in scientific, science-based specialties. And the requirement for this job is a bachelor's degree in science.
We usually try to pull them out of Missouri Southern because their, their bachelor's program is in environmental health. So with Health Department, Missouri Southern is.
Oh, good. Put that in there. I mean, if Emily's not aware of that, please let her know that Missouri Southern has a, has a good program.
Yes. That's where we usually, there are people, because they're already there, they already have the certifications, so.
I don't know, but where my wife came from.
Oh, what, what about, do we look outside this area? Do you know of any programs in Arkansas, Oklahoma, Kansas that are closed, you know, Fort Smith or something like that that I know they have?
Would Erin know of anybody?
Probably.
If that hasn't been, Erin whom?
Winslow.
Oh, he used to work here.
Erin Winslow. Okay.
He's a state environmental health.
Then, and I'm sure Emily may be well aware of these, but Erin Winslow and Missouri Southern. But, you know, I think we should have almost ongoing recruiting for the areas that have high turnover.
Does OTC do any of that stuff?
Don't worry.
OTC doesn't offer a bachelor program, just associate.
Or even like a apprentice, like Angela.
Internships?
Yeah. That's what I was trying to say.
Well, she's already, okay, I see what you're saying in the internship. Can, can you function in this role with a certification or does it require a degree?
It requires a degree. You don't necessarily have to have certification.
Okay.
A degree in science.
Okay. But I would truly entertain a motion to have ongoing recruiting for environmental health.
Yes.
So that we have.
They'll make a motion too.
Okay. And by ongoing recruiting, I mean that it's open advertisement. That way we will hopefully have a, a phono or a file of applicants. Okay, all in, all, any further discussion on that? We got a first, we got a motion in a second. Okay, all in favor? I, okay, it's unanimous. Same thing, not same motion, but a different motion. We need a motion to, I don't think we have instructed Emily officially to recruit for a secretary for, for public health.
We talked about, I don't know if it's ever been put a motion.
Okay. Anybody want to move it?
I don't know, so move.
Okay. And recruit for Secretary Public Environmental Health, Secretary Environmental Health. Second by Tanya. And any further discussion? In close session, I can explain to you why our previous motion needs to be rescinded regarding that issue. Okay. All righty. Well, all in.
She does have the Environmental Reception Court posted on their website.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Well, then I guess. I mean, well, let's make it official. All in favor? All right, okay. Now, we can hire for it, not just, not just recruit. So, let's see here, where are we headed? Yeah, here's the, the issue on the CureMD app. Haley Wecker, one of our nurses, says that she has, she has experience in placing forms on the CureMD app and is willing to, is willing to do so if we will authorize the hours for her to, to develop those, transfer those forms over to.
When you say CureMD app, are you talking about on the computer or on your phone?
Phone, the mobile app.
Okay. I just making sure.
Is CureMD on the?
On the computer, that's our scheduler.
Oh.
I didn't know we had an app for that.
Yeah. Is it called, is it CureMD? Maybe I've got the wrong name.
I haven't seen CureMD. I was wondering what it was.
Oh.
Yeah, CureMD, she is getting our paperwork ready for that for like pre-authorization and everything, but our app and CureMD are two different things.
Okay, okay, yes.
It's just CCHD.
I'm sorry. Please, yeah, change that to CCHD mobile app?
It's built by the public health app.com.
Okay. But would anybody like to, to consider having her do some development on that?
I guess my question would be on that, you know, for her to give us a bit because, and it's going to be a long timeframe as well. So I would like to know what she would charge us.
It would be hours.
Oh, yeah. So the timeframe and, yeah, the hours involved in that because it will be pretty extensive.
And I thought that's what Connor was doing.
I did too. And I didn't, the way he made it sound is he couldn't do the whole thing. So I didn't know how much we had to.
Pay the outside source.
Get all tech involved because that is very extensive to make it an interactive app.
So it's not something we could do in-house?
If she can write the code, yes. But even when you write the code, it constantly, constantly has to be updated.
Oh.
It is never, it's an ongoing, never-ending thing.
Well, then I'll, I'm going to wait until Emily can explain this more clearly or maybe Haley can come in here and tell us.
And even like the QR codes and stuff on this, we probably need to have a link because you have to pay for QR codes for them to be yours. You can get the free ones off and then everything comes as an advertisement. So you may get 10 advertisements before you actually get to those. It's a number. QR codes. We found out the hard way.
Well, and maybe that is why, going back to an earlier discussion on the survey, maybe that's why you balked at that.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's why I just put on there a link.
A link is probably, probably preferable, huh? Okay, well, again, moving that down the road, we can get further input from Haley and from Emily on what that actually means. Next item of new business is Emily would like to attend a joint public health conference in Columbia, Missouri, September 17th through 19th. The fee, I don't know how, it may be as high as $300 for the two-day conference for her. Does give her some CEUs and, and it also will cost because she'll have to have hotels and meals and stuff like that. I'm going to be going to it. I thought this would be something that I could look in on and I've already registered. But do we want to go ahead and approve a, approve that she register for this and then we can later approve what she estimates her? I don't know. There may be a per diem that, that is authorized for training. And we'll have to find that out. But I would like to, I would like to offer right now that, recommend that Emily go ahead and register for this. We'll authorize the $300, up to $300. We are members of MoAlpha and what is it? MSPH or something like that. But anyway, we're members and these are sponsors, so she may get a discount.
I agree, I think she should go.
I'll say.
All righty. You got Kathy and then Steve. Any further discussion on that? And I'll keep an eye on it while I'm there. I'll have my wife do it too. Because Martha's going with me. Yeah. Well, Martha's got a doctorate in education and a doctorate in engineering and so, and a master's in mathematics. And so she has an interest in some of the statistical stuff and she oftentimes blows the statistics out of the water and says, that's not true. So I'll welcome her input. So, all right, all in favor?
All right.
All right, okay. Emily will be out of the office. Those are, I think it's a Tuesday, Wednesday if I'm not mistaken. So it's during the week. So she'll be out of the office during that time.
What was the name of that conference?
It's called the Joint Public Health Conference.
Okay.
By the way, this is, this should have been under Old Business, but I've been asked again whether the sign needs to be on at night. Or can that sign out there be timed so that it is, goes off at 8:00 PM or something?
I wonder, I wonder if it's a, could do a dusk to dawn thing.
The only reason I was, yeah, I'm sure you may be able to do that, but it, during the wintertime, it's already dusk here at closing time. So, you know, I, I could say, put a rigid time on there, seven to seven or eight to eight or something like that.
Yeah.
Because, you know, it almost looks like we're open.
Right.
Yeah.
At midnight.
Yeah.
We're not.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, I was thinking.
Maybe seven to eight.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, seven in the morning. Had it off from eight to nine to seven in the morning.
Okay. All righty. Well, so moved. Second, I guess, Kat. Okay, oh, Tanya. All righty. We will have, probably Connor, I think, is the one who works with that sign and adjusts the timing. And even if we need to get a consultant, you know, somebody who works with that.
Well, it depends on what kind of circuit it's on. You may just need to add a timer to the circuit for it. I mean.
We're able to dim it, we'll be able to turn it off.
Right.
Ourselves.
Okay.
My diesel trucks, I probably put a timer on the heater on them because they take a lot of juice. Plug in all the time.
All right. Let me see. I want to move on down here to chambers of commerce. We're a member of the, of the NICSa Chamber of Commerce and that's so that we can participate in the NICSpo extravaganza. And, but we've been approached by Ozark and for a different reason by Sparta. We're not members of Ozark and they would like us to be. Sparta is trying to tap into a cooperation with the Health Department on, on just speaking engagements and things like that. But, you know, my question is, you know, if we are a member of NICSa Chamber of Commerce, should we be a member of all the other ones who?
I think so.
Or should we not be a member of any? You know?
And you have to be a member to be at NICSpo?
It's what, that's the explanation I was given. What does it cost? Not that, I can't remember. It's not, I can't remember. But the question she, Emily asked was, do we, are, who do we, who, yeah, do we have limits on how many of these chambers of commerce we, we participate in and what are the benefits from?
There could be some unforeseen benefits such as other chamber of commerce members helping out. You know, we, we talked about volunteers and different things like that. It might give us a better standing on something like that.
I've never been a member of a chamber of commerce. I have attended a couple of luncheons over, I can't even remember. Oh, it's here in Ozark.
And it doesn't surprise me in Ozark because it was the NICSa, had a mixed one with Ozark.
So.
Spokane don't have one, we're all at work.
Well, you know, it's, it's a, it's a worthy discussion to have. I don't know how many chambers there are.
You might talk to the president, you know, ensure they've got a president or a chairman or somebody like that. You might talk to them and say, you know, what are the benefits of, you know, selling?
Okay. Well, I would like to know first though, how many chambers of commerce there are throughout the Christian county? And then.
Clever may have one.
Clever has one.
What is our investment? What is it going to cost us and what is the benefit? So, and we'll of course refer those all to Emily.
And you said Sparta was wanting us to join the speaking rooms?
Not join. They want us to participate in their rotational speakers bureau. Apparently they have a, a different speaker talk about the services within the county at each, each of their meetings.
I think that's important for us to go to.
Oh, no, I think that's high, high return on the dollar. So. Oh, no, I think that's high, high return on the dollar.
So, NICSa, Ozark, Sparta, Rogersville, that's Chamber of Commerce. So, show me Christian County, I'll know who that is.
And that's basically Christian County's chamber.
Billings and marketing. Okay. It has billings clever for Fremont Hills, how the NICSa is part of the St. Brook.
Wow.
Wow.
Fremont Hills, any businesses, other than the golf course?
They're a single community, Fremont Hills.
Yeah.
That's extensive.
They still live there, but it's not, like stores and stuff.
No.
And they still have a NICSa address.
Well, and it does, I'll tell you, it does. Some of those will contact a lot of the shakers and movers within the county. It'll also contact people who have resources that we may need to know about.
You were talking to the plants or pay a lot of it all.
Another consideration, okay. I mean, if nothing else, to show them that we're not hiding, that we are very active within the community and we want to be part of it.
Well, as I said in an email a while back, it seemed like in the past, it's, it always had to be on one person's terms. I mean, I heard that from several people in the community, so I think we need to get away from that.
All righty, well, we will move, we will recommend that, that we look into being a member of the chambers of commerce that have memberships. Because billings or clever may not have memberships, they may just have an organization. And then we can see what the cost is, we can see what the benefits are. Okay, I'm going to move back up here, we did that. No, we did that. I'm going to talk with Emily more about this. I have just gotten this concern recently that we are not tapping into some of the organizations like La Leche League, the Pregnancy Resource Center, Celebrate Recovery, Alcoholics Anonymous, Watershed, I mean, Watered Gardens in Joplin, Freeway Ministries, Preborn, all sorts of things that could be providing amazing resources to our county. And the issue has been raised again about hiring someone here to do mental health. And yet, if you look back at the referrals, all of the referrals for mental health came from the court system. We were also, the staff member was backlog, horrid, to the point where very few people received the services. Maybe we should be looking at a resource directory or maybe a resource director who interfaces with these various programs, literally is on a first-name basis with them and is able to call them and say, "We've got somebody referred here from the courts that needs your help. Can you do something pro bono? Or can you integrate this program?"
No, great idea. Matter of fact, I reached out to the lady that said we used to have a counselor here and she was shocked, first off, that, she said, "That was six months ago when we had that conversation and you remembered it and called me?" Well, I'm not a news politician, I guess. Anyway, she, I told her, I said, "You're, feel welcome to come in our public comment section and talk to us." And complete your case. But as yet I haven't seen her, so.
Yeah, well.
But that might be something, an even better route to take, you know, gather in all these resources and then just more or less be attractive.
Well, and I don't want to be padding our staff, but if even, I would like to consider the possibility that we have a resource director. Someone who has that responsibility. And who can even contact counselors in the area and request freebies. Request interventions. You know, if it's done in the right way, you'd be, I'd be, I'm amazed every day at how many people step up and say, "Sure, I can do that." And so, I think it's an untapped resource. Untapped.
But how seriously? A lot of the mental trauma is probably going to end up in the courts. I mean, we had a situation just this past week with one of my grandkids and, you know, here we go again. But some of these private counselors, I mean, and to me, another trick to this would be getting good counselors. I think I mentioned to you on the custody battle, that you'll seek counseling for the court. My oldest granddaughter, that counselor just let her sit there and tell her the whole hour she's there. Well, I buy her color and moves.
All the more reason to have someone knowledgeable who is able to manage that program. And even if it's another way in which we utilize maternal-child health funds.
Or our mental health funds, right.
Well, now, yeah, we're not currently using much of the mental health funds and frankly, I thought it was a waste of time in order to do a billboard.
Billboards.
So, whatever we spent on that, we could have spent on staffing a position that would.
Well, are those, is that funding available from the state?
Yes. In several, we have to be creative about it. We'd have to identify what we want. And we might have to pull from two or three places in order to get enough funding. But I think even part of it could go under infrastructure. And there's still funds in infrastructure. Well, consideration for a resource director.
Do you want a motion on that?
I would love it.
I would love that we hire a resource.
Director.
Director.
Resource director. With the, with what we just discussed as their duties? Any further discussion on that?
What salary we want, okay.
First thing, we have to get a job description because the, I mean, we want to go ahead and look into this, but that means we're authorizing Emily to go ahead and either write or ask for a job description.
Yeah. Because, like I said, Robbie White had brought a preborn hairball back and I've not had a chance to do the B-dup, but I think I'm going to probably get involved in that.
Yeah, I don't see why they couldn't bring an ultrasound machine over here and have an outlet for some of these gals to come in and, and see, get an ultrasound of early pregnancy. But that discussion has to be done after we do the research. So, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Let's see here. Chambers of Commerce, Kimberly, would you address the serve safe manager courses that you put out in your email?
Yeah, so, there are five years, well, there's serve safe certification for managers at restaurants. And so, one of the food, the requirements of the food codes, they have to have one on staff at all times of hours of operation. So, I received a grant from the FDA several years ago, four or five years ago, that I got like $10,000 plus dollars. And what my proposal was, is to provide serve safe certification to locally owned restaurants. Not sure, not McDonald's, none of those, a mom and pop, because they're about over a hundred bucks a piece. And so, I'm telling you, everybody got certified. I had Tom McCord who teaches that. And so, we partnered with Ozark down here, their building, and so they allowed us to use that building to have classes. So, that'd be a good resource to use that building for and/or one of the commerce rooms to provide that because they're great, they'll become and do here next year. And so, I said I'd reach out to see what you guys thought about putting $10,000 toward re-certifying our mom and pop managers, employees who serve safe.
Now, is that something usually the owner would have to pay for?
Usually, yeah.
So, we're partnering with them in order to make sure that they get the training?
Yes, a lot of them can't afford, you know, a hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars a piece per employee. It was something I looked into, to getting it, getting them certified through that grant. And they appreciated so much, I mean, absolutely. And you could tell the difference in how they handled their foods and all this, you know, everything, temperatures and, so, it was, it's a wonderful thing and I just thought I'd go out there.
So, you're looking to do some grant funding or are we looking to fund it?
Funding.
The Health Department?
Because that FDA funding normally comes around once a year, this prior to our past.
Do you know, remember what the, what the cost was to?
It was around, for all of them, around $10,000. I used the, I used the whole grant.
Oh, my goodness, okay. So.
We can probably put up to, you know, $10,000.
Is there another grant that maybe we can seek?
Maybe some of the resource directors could be looking at it as well.
A grant?
Yeah, the research, talking about.
Yeah. But for right now, this.
Emily may be able to seek those in grants out there. She can write the grant for it.
Or if there's a, is there funds available within environmental health's budget or within, you know, because they're going to be, at least until we hire, their expenses for salaries is going down.
Well, but hopefully not for long.
Well, I know, but.
Probably have to pay the salaries of the other departments if they assist us during this time.
Yeah. Well, so we want to authorize Emily then in order to seek funding for this serve safe manager training for the mom and pop.
Something like this.
Yeah, local restaurants.
Yeah. I mean, I understand what the concept keepers talk about, a lot of times, you know, like my wife, she cooks all the time, but it sort of, sort of shows you, hey, it's better to do it this way. Not saying that she has anything to learn in that respect, but.
I think we all do, though. I think, you know, if we saw where a possible risk was in our own family's food preparation, we might change some things. So, yeah, let's, so, I'm sorry, who made the motion? Steve did? Who seconded?
I'm second.
Kathy, okay, so we're.
Then we seek funding.
You're right, seek funding for that serve safe manager course.
His restaurant owner.
Sounds like it'd be approximately, well, $10,000 plus inflation. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And we have unanimous again. Okay, I have covered everything I had on my agenda. Now it's to, were there any staff questions that we're aware of?
There was.
There was.
And she put it in the box, but we didn't have access to the box and it doesn't appear to be in there, but she said that her, her comment to the board is regarding the glass and she knows that it has been discussed and she just wanted us to be aware that the glass very much hinders them from being able to hear. She has a difficult time if anything else is going on, if, you know, someone else is talking here, she can't hear through this glass. If the printer is going, she can't hear. And so, it's, it's a constant, it's very, very difficult working behind that glass.
And if you look at that glass, it's in three sections. Just take the center section out.
Leave the two sides. Yeah, that, she said, you know, they would help.
Problem solved, you've got face-to-face interaction.
And a place for the sound to go, great. So, she's really struggling.
I've had a problem with it since day one, since I walked in here to sign up for the board and seen our bulletproof glass.
Specifically removing the, you recommend?
When we go across the street, I'll show you, is, just take the center section out that's got the little speaker hole in it, just take that out, put it over there across the street.
How much section is left then? Is it so too much?
Well, it's about a three-foot section.
So, three foot on each side?
And it's separate, you've got the two side sections like this, but then you, the center section is set back. It's three separate pieces of glass.
Would it, by just removing the center section, would that give enough?
Yeah, I mean, you're talking three foot wide and you like talking to somebody through that door.
I'm going to make the motion that we remove the glass.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? We don't need it. We don't want to give a price limit on it or, I don't know how much it's going to cost to do that.
All of it or just that piece?
Just that center section.
Yeah, I think there's two center sections. I think, I have to look at it, but, yeah, just take this, any center section that's set back, just take it out. And I think it's, I know there's one on that side and I think there's another over on that side. And I know the public will be happy.
Oh, yeah.
And the employees, it's going to make it easier for them.
It's going to lessen my phone calls.
Okay, all righty. All in favor? It's unanimous. Yeah, it was kind of a big change of direction regarding the bulletproof glass when it was mentioned at the June 18 meeting that we could remove part or all of it. Whenever that was brought up in discussion previously, it was said it was approved by a previous board, it's unchanged. And we've spent all this money, so we're not going to undo it.
Well, if the need ever arises for it again, just take the center sections back in.
Yep.
Okay, well, I mean, it's approved. So, all right, any board member questions? I don't know who we'd ask the question of. Each other. If not, then I would like to have a roll call vote to close this session and enter into closed session. Kathy, you're our secretary. Roll call.
Roll call.
Steve?
Can I?
Tanya, I'm.
Steve's going to take a break.
I'm going to go ahead and stop screaming.